We're going to go ahead and start our regular Board of Directors meeting, and we're going to start that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. This evening, Director Perkins will read our land acknowledgement.
Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinaman Peoples and the Kowalski Tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thank you, Rob. All right, next order of business on the agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda.
Madam President, I would like to amend the agenda as follows. The matter under discussion at the executive agenda has been laid on the table. So the first part of this is to move item 4A to a position right before item 12, which is the adjournment. So we'll be doing that as the last thing we do tonight. And then the second one would be to insert a continuance of our executive session after public comments. So it would go public comments, continuation of session, and then the matter for board action as the appeal hearing decision. And that's my motion.
Thank you, Director Perkins. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so when moved in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is our board consent agenda. We'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move that we approve these boards' consent agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Movement seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, next we'll move on to the superintendent consent agenda.
I move for approval of the superintendent consent agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. All right, as our amended agenda, we will move past number four and Superintendent Report. Superintendent Boyd.
Yes, thank you, a quick report for you. We had two days of professional development with our principals and focusing on the implementation of our strategic plan, our high-leverage practices, guaranteed and viable curriculum, and related to success and belonging. Principals, as is normal for this group, showed up in great fashion, leaned in, and did an incredible job of beginning to plan in serious fashion for professional learning related to our strategic plans. So we're really excited about that in those two days. The whole teaching, learning, and equity staff has been just working their tails off to get ready for our soon-to-come-in teachers and staff. So I've been filling in for that department and meeting with staff, and they're doing a great job of keeping all of the balls rolling that Dr. Williams has been, had set in motion. So have great confidence that we're going to be ready for our teachers and staff when they come for that. We have a great retreat planned for you, two days, a day and a half. Lori and I have worked with, sat down with Tricia Lubach and took what the board's hopes and desires were for those two days and put it into an agenda, and we'll be emailing that out, I think, tomorrow. Did we get that out today? Tomorrow, we'll be emailing that out tomorrow. So I think it'll be a great opportunity for us to connect and plan our year. So we sat down with board leadership, we took all the topics that you were interested in, and we sat down with Tricia Lubach from WASDA and put together, I think, what will be a compelling agenda for a day and a half of learning with you. So that's my report for this session.
Great, thank you, John. All right, next is the budget presentation. Again, I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Boyd to introduce.
Yeah, Kimberly Noah is here. Kimberly is the Director of Finance, and so she is working with Jennifer Jacobs, who has gone on a well-deserved vacation that she planned three years ago, pre-COVID. So she's vacationing with her family, and so Kimberly's here. We have a presentation, a prerecorded presentation from Jennifer for us to be able to get the budget report, and Kimberly will be here to answer any follow-up clarifying questions for you.
Good evening, this is Jennifer Jacobson. I'm the Chief Financial Officer at Evergreen Public Schools. This presentation includes the 2324 budget and the four-year forecast. First, I want to point out that the budget in its entirety is available on our website. There's a link to the 2324 budget on the first page of the evergreenps.org website. At the next board meeting, August 22nd, the F-195 budget will be on the agenda for adoption. Fluctuations in enrollment have a significant impact on the budget. The number of students enrolled in the district drives almost 90% of our revenue. Since the 1617 school year, we have experienced an overall 14.8% decrease in our student FTE. For 2324, we are estimating a 258 student decline in enrollment. This decrease is seen across all grade levels and in most of our programs. This graph displays projected enrollment by grade level. This is an important slide because it reflects the decreasing enrollment trends the district is experiencing. In the 11th and 12th grades, we typically see an increase of approximately 200 FTE to account for out-of-district students who attend the Cascadia Tech Academy. As you can see, in the 10th through 12th grades, we see a range of 1,850 to 2,100 Evergreen students. In the 6th through 9th grades, we project a range of 1,650 to 1,750 students, and enrollment drops to the 1,500 student level in the elementary grades. As the smaller class sizes move through our system, we will need to continue to adjust for the corresponding impacts on revenue. Here is the summary of our 2324 general fund budget. We are estimating to start this fall with a total fund balance of $28.2 million and end the year at just over $28 million. I'll go into more detail on the revenues and expenses on the next few slides. The total fund balance consists of both restricted and unrestricted portions. The restricted fund balance accounts are made up of an excess of funds received in particular programs in which the funds can only be used for that purpose. For example, we cannot use excess Skill Center or food service dollars on basic education expenses. Our district policy requires we have an unrestricted fund balance of 5% of the prior year's expenditures. We anticipate ending the 2324 year with $20.4 million of unrestricted funds, which is 5% of the estimated 2223 expenditures. The next slide shows a revenue comparison between the 2223 and 2324 budgets. The main differences next year are an increase in levy tax collections of about $3 million, an increase in state special purpose funds of $8.5 million, which is primarily special ed and LAP funding, and a $10 million decrease in federal funds due to the decline in ESER grant support. The majority of district funding comes from state general apportionment with almost 56% of the total. State special purpose includes special ed, LAP, bilingual, and transportation funding. Federal special purpose funds consist of title grants, nutrition services, and ESER funding. These special purpose funds cannot be spent on basic education expenditures. Any excess we receive in these funds must be accounted for in the restricted fund balance accounts to be spent for those purposes only. On the next slide is an expenditures-by-program comparison between budgets. Although we reduced our expenditures across programs by approximately $19 million through budget reductions, the total increase in salary costs went above these reductions based on the state's inflationary factor for salaries of 3.7%. The 3.7% represents the implicit price deflator, or IPD, and is the factor that the state funds salary increases on. In addition, ESER federal funds reflect a $10 million decrease in funds available for next year. Slide 8 is the expenditures-by-object graph. It gives a visualization of where the funds are spent. Total salary and benefits equates almost 83% of the budget. Supplies or 5.8% of the budget include fuel, technology, curriculum, and building budgets. Contractual services make up over 10% of the budget. These include contracts for both custodial services and nutrition services, as well as utilities, insurance, running start payments, and lease payments. The majority of the cost of our custodial nutrition services contracts are for school staff, so including those in the total brings the amount spent on staff to over 87% of our total funds. This slide provides another way of viewing expenditure data. OSPI aggregates expenditures by activity in the following sections: Teaching, Teaching Support, Other Support, Principal, and Central Administration. Teaching and Teaching Support are directly student-facing and make up over 72% of the total budget. Other Support includes required services like utilities, insurance, transportation, food services, and maintenance. Central Administration includes payroll, human resources, and accounting, as well as the superintendent's office and communications. This graph shows how the amount of basic education revenue and expense per student has increased over the last 10 years. The district has consistently spent over and above the state allocation to provide basic education to our students, thanks to our EPNA levy and our Technology Levy Funds. ESER federal grant funds are expiring at the end of the 2324 school year. The ESER grants were allocated to districts to help address the impacts of the pandemic. In the 2223 fiscal year, we are projected to spend over $17 million of ESER funds on staff, summer school, and educational software. This will leave approximately $8.7 million for the 2324 school year to help support our students as we are still coping with the social, emotional, and educational impacts from the pandemic. A few years ago, the state implemented a requirement to provide a four-year forecast as part of the budget. This includes the 2324 budget, as well as projections for the subsequent three years. A variety of assumptions go into this long-term analysis, including enrollment estimates, state and federal funding, future contracts, and inflation. Enrollment is listed at the top of each year, and there's a downward trend, as explained in the previous slides. A roughly 400 FTE loss heading into both 2425 and 2526, and over 200 FT decline in the 2627 school year. For 2324, the state revenue for one student FTE is approximately $10,000, so that is incorporated into state apportionment estimates as enrollment decreases are projected into the future. State funding for salaries, benefits, and MSOCs, which are materials and supplies and contracts, are currently based on the inflationary factor called IPD, the implicit price deflator. OSPI has estimated IPD for salaries at 3.9% for 2425, 2.4% for 2526, and 1.9% for 2627. The other inflationary factor used by OSPI is the Consumer Price Index, which is CPI. This factor is used to determine the amount of levy equalization funding that we receive. We are projecting a significant reduction in LEA funding from $8.4 million in 2223 down to $1.7 million in 2324. Due to the loss of revenue from enrollment decline, the decrease in levy equalization dollars, and the expiration of ESER funds, we will continue to be facing reductions in the coming years in order to balance the budget. The expenditure reduction plan is listed at the bottom of the slide. For 2425, we're estimating a reduction of approximately $13.5 million in expenditures, $6.6 million in 2526, and $4.5 million in reductions in 2627. This is assuming that state funding will remain at status quo with no additional significant revenue streams in the foreseeable future. The last slide is a summary of the other district funds. The Capital Project Fund is used for facility construction and remodeling costs. We're winding down our large bond projects and currently have the new Mill Plain Elementary Transportation Facility and two High School Music Room additions under planning and construction. The Debt Service Fund is used for repayment of bond debt that was used in the Capital Projects Fund for this construction. The Associated Student Body Funds are used for extracurricular student activities, including sports and clubs. The Transportation Vehicle Fund can only be used for the acquisition of school buses. This concludes the 2324 budget presentation. We will now have questions and comments from the board. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. At this time at this time, I think, since it's the first reading of our budget information, should we go ahead and take questions from the audience at this time? Questions or comments from the audience related to the budget only before the board makes their comments and asks questions? So any comments about the budget from the audience?
We have some hands.
Oh, go ahead and come on up to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
I'm a first-timer. My name's Krista Hagan.
Hi.
I'm curious, we've got all this building going on around us. Do we know why there's so much more building and housing, but fewer students?
Building of, can you be more specific about?
Well, we've got, I mean, just down where we are, we've got all these apartment complexes and zero-lot line housing. There's housing going in all over the place.
Got you. So new developments coming up and not, and the student decline? Is there a correlation between the two?
Yeah, good question. That's a question that everybody's asking. We see all of this growth in East Vancouver, and why is it not reflected in increase in student population? So we, in the fall, we hired a demographer to do not a real, real in-depth, but a fairly in-depth report for us, and there are several factors related to that. The first factor is that housing is a lot more expensive for young families. In addition to that, young families don't like the type of housing there is in East Vancouver, based on the period it was built in. So they're moving to the outskirts. The second piece is we've got a lot of people who are, have already raised their children or are retired, moving in our community, have the tax advantage of being in Vancouver without income tax, and then you can go over across and purchase things without having to have sales tax. So we're seeing a big boom in that. Birth rates are down. You would think that with COVID, that the opposite would have happened, but birth rates actually went down with all of the uncertainties related to that. So those are the top three factors that were mentioned. We've also had private schools that have captured some of our market share related to, you know, so that's a factor. And I think those were, do any of the other board members remember any of the other factors? I think that kind of covers it.
I think those were the main things. I remember mostly the retired couples coming across from Portland and when the housing boom was going and taking a lot of those houses that were probably in areas where younger families could afford them. And so we've got a lot of people that are moving into our area with no kids.
We also have a lot of the new housing that's being built, especially when you see like the apartments and that are actually 55 and over. They're senior living, and so we're seeing quite a few of those come up. So it's, and if you look back, back in history of our district, it's been cyclical, and you'll see like a neighborhood will kind of start to get, the kids get older, go away to college or whatever. And then a few years, you know, it seems like maybe five, 10 years later, then those families move because they're downsizing for their retirement, and then the new families start, that's what we used to see. Little different now because the market's different, but, you know, the price of housing is so much higher, but yeah.
Very counterintuitive. We do have one pocket of our district that is growing, and that's the houses that feed into Illahy, Shehala, and Union. So there's, and there's more housing going in over there. So we'll see certain pockets of our district increase in enrollment with some apartment complexes going in there and some other housing developments. But for the most part, overall, we're seeing fewer students per household.
One of the things I remember about the demographer's report is that he broke out, at least in the graphs, the loss of enrollment due to increased homeschooling or private schooling, and didn't find it to be what I'd call a controlling variable. It was there, but it wasn't the big piece of it. The big piece of it seemed to be moving out with retirees replacing where there used to be families. In fact, he agreed with the idea that the demographics of this whole community are turning from a place to raise young families to a place to retire. I don't know how I feel about that, but those are some of the reasons that I remember.
Thank you for your question.
Hi, Phil Cronlisch. Does the budget constrain the salaries portion? In other words, if you're limited by the budget, you have to hold at some point the salaries? Is that my understanding? I mean, you can go only so far, or explain that piece of it to me?
Well, the way I would explain that is you have to, you know, negotiate salaries that are affordable and sustainable.
Well, there is also a percentage that's included from the legislation each year for increases.
So there is some constraint, you can only go so far, right? Kind of, is that somewhat? I mean, I know that's, you can't say a number, but that sort of does, right? That's kind of what happens. You only got so much money in the family budget, and you, right? That's kind of what, it is constrained somewhat.
We have to, yep, we have to work within the means that we have.
Thank you.
Go ahead and come on up, Gary, I'm sorry.
Is this the same budget basically as you had in May that you guys were talking about, the proposed?
This budget is very similar to the one that was proposed. When we do the technical work related to budgets, you, you know, we can't do everything exactly how we laid out, so there's some variances based on our ability to carry out what we had anticipated.
Yeah, I know you were waiting to hear back about, in July, about a pivot table from the state to see what exactly your funds would be for this next year. I guess back in May, it was mentioned that admin's going from 215 positions to 203 and a half, so it'd be cutting that by 11 and a half positions. And I was curious what the head count, what's happening to that for non-admin positions from last, current last school year to this coming school year?
I don't have that on the top of my head, Gary, but I can get that to you.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Can you be more specific, can you specifically tell me what you're asking?
Probably just the non-admin, just, you know, admin versus non-admin, I guess. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments about the budget? All right, then we'll go ahead and take questions and comments from the board.
I just see they have budget questions. So shouldn't they be speaking now?
Anybody can come up and ask a question right now about the budget from the audience, if there's anyone that has questions about, related strictly to the budget.
Hi. Superintendent Boyd just mentioned some of the specifics.
Can you give us your name, please, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, Michelle Annett.
Thanks.
Superintendent Boyd just mentioned that some of the specifics are going to change. When does that information become public?
John, you want to take that because I'm not sure exactly?
Kimberly, can you come up and tell us the timeline for the budget? Yeah.
So this is the first reading, and there'll be one more, a second reading that's going to happen at the end of this month. I think it's August 22nd board meeting. And at that time, it'll be requested to be approved by the board, to be adopted. In between that time, if there's anything that transpires between now and that time that would change the budget, that would occur, I don't know of anything at this point in time that's going to be changing. What we see now is what's going to be the budget for next year, unless there's some changes by the board themselves that they'd like to see.
Thank you.
So I guess my follow-up question is, I feel like the information that we just got was really broad. Is there a way to see more details? Is that listed on the public website? Okay.
Thank you. Can you come up and explain that, Kimberly? Thank you. Just so the, all the public that may be online can see, hear that.
Can I, I don't know if I-
You want to see the website, so you can-
Yeah, that would be great, and then I can-
Diana will help us out with that.
Okay, so this is the main webpage that you would get to, and if you just scroll down to this, kind of a third of the way down, there's the 2324 budget information. And so you have the F-195, which is the main document, and it has all that detailed information in it that you can scroll through. There is that four-year forecast that Jennifer had brought up, that summary slide, that's in this document here. And you'll be able to look at each individual fund, general fund, ASB, transportation vehicle, debt service, and capital projects fund. And then there's the supplemental report as well. And this one is more just other tidbits like she had in her PowerPoint presentation, details about FTE and other various things, so. But this first document here, the budget F-195, that's the one that has a lot more information broken down, where you can look at FTE, student enrollment, and all of that. Okay?
Go ahead and come on up.
This one? No. Oh, I'm good, just leave it alone? Okay.
Hi there.
Hi, my name's Amy Prentice. I have a first and second grader in the district. I did read over all the information that was posted online, and I guess I had two questions. One was about the Highly Capable Program. I know when you guys presented the proposed budget in March, you were eliminating something like $600,000 by removing the pull-out Excel program at the elementary level. And when I went through the line by line, it looks like the funding is increasing for that program, like versus last year. And so I'm wondering if that's still going to be eliminated? And then I also had a question on the benefits. The salaries for certificated and classified employees go up, but the benefits go down by like almost $5 million. So I was just curious if you could kind of speak to how we're spending more on salary, but less on benefits, because usually those kind of trend together.
Right, yes, there was- The Washington State Department of Retirement Systems reduced the amount that this, that we as an employer pay into the teacher's retirement fund. And the classified, for the teachers, it was 5%. So it was a huge decrease. And then for the classified, it was 1% that the employer is contributing into that fund. So that's why you see that unusual anomaly where you're seeing the benefits going down. You would normally see them go up. In regards to the Highly Capable Program, I thought we had reduced those expenditures, but we do have the increases in salary and stuff. So it's making it look like we're spending more, which we are, but we have reduced staff.
That's a good answer, thank you.
Okay.
So I have a follow-up question then to the Highly Capable Program, and then about, okay. Regarding the Highly Capable Program, if we're cutting those programs, who are the staff members that are being paid? Like who are the FTE that are being paid for the Highly Capable Program if the kids are all getting cluster instruction at their building level?
So who are the, can you say that one more time?
Right, I'm sorry. So I have, I have two, three kids that are all identified highly capable. So they're not going to the pull-out program anymore, which is where there were teachers that were full-time doing Excel all day.
Right.
Those teachers are elsewhere now. So whose salaries are- So whose salaries are, are there other highly capable teachers and staff people spread throughout the district that then it looks like it's going up? The money for salaries going up?
I would have to get back to you on the specifics of how the highly capable money is being used specifically.
Okay.
Happy to do that.
We could probably get that information in the next couple of weeks before the next meeting and get back to you specifically on that.
Yep.
Thanks. So my other question is, my daughter is at Cascade and spent the whole year spending her lunchtime in the library. And that was her safe place, her place of joy, because she loves books and she built an incredible relationship with the librarian. And it broke our hearts to find out that teacher librarians at the middle school level were being cut as part of that 19 million. And what I'm, what I'm curious about is where do I go as a parent to find out if any of that has changed since March? So.
That has not changed.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so. Actually, real quick, can you make sure to leave your contact information so we can follow up with you on those?
We have it.
Okay. All right, so now we'll take questions and comments from the board.
Just looking at the document here, it looks like the increase for highly capable is, where'd it go? Revenue is increasing by about $10,000, $15,000 is about it. And expenditures, where's that program? Expenditures have always exceeded the revenues for highly capable, right? So we were talking about expenditure numbers with the $600,000? Is that right? Thanks for that clarification. I appreciate the clarity of the discussions that we've been able to have and the documents today and especially the video and presentation. Thank you for coming.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank everyone for the meetings that we've had individually going through some of these and having, I noticed a change in some of the slides there that gave more explanation, which I think makes it clear for people to see just, it's such a huge budget and it's, and the way we're, the state has us have to, to show it, it's complicated for anybody to look at. So I liked having the graphs that gave us some more detail in general. So, because people want to know, like, how much is going to fund the classroom and how many, you know, how much is going to central office? How much is going here or there? It's nice to be able to at least get a visual so you can kind of get a better grasp on. And then, of course, within those categories, there's a lot of detail. But it's nice to be able to have that first good visual. So I appreciate the time that it took to do that and the changes that they made to, to help us see that, give that information out in a better way.
Thank you, Victoria. Jackie, do you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that for the projection, we're looking at a reduction of 13.5 million for next year, then 6.6 the year after, and then 4.5 the year after that.
That is correct. That due to the enrollment decline, we'll need to reduce the budget by 13 and a half million. And that's projected, so there are a lot of factors, variables, including enrollment and how enrollment comes in and all of the, everything related to that.
And we never know what the legislature is going to do as far as increase in funding. They haven't been, they weren't quite in the mood this last year, but you never know. I mean, some other districts are going to be bigger districts even than us that are going to be facing some pretty dire situations that it may create kind of an urgency that they have to revisit our funding, but we don't know till it happens.
Jenny, you have anything?
I want to also thank everyone that was involved because one of the questions came around, like, when's this start? Like, and I know we had conversations in the spring around some of the reductions. Budget's a year-long process. I don't think it ever really stops because there's so many details that go into it. As you can see, I mean, all of those line items represents lots of different spending and vouchers and billing, and it's a huge process that never stops. Plus, when you think about all of our capital projects that we've been having going on at the same time, all of that work that's, that's going on, that coincides with just the, what's in the budget. The state requires us to do that projection, that four-year. And so again, it does look pretty bleak when you think about 13 and a half million and we just are on the heels of 19 million this year and we made cuts the previous year to that. One of the things I just wanted to point out, when I think about enrollment and some of the questions about like, you know, why, why really the significant budget cuts if our enrollment has declined in the last probably three years and we've been down that 3,000 students since 20, pretty much since 2020? It's really, it's really because we used our ESR funds to keep, keeping our staffing levels high and we just can't continue to sustain at that level. We have to have a balanced budget. And if we're, our ESR funds are being depleted, we can't use those any longer to keep the staffing levels the way they were. So we have to even out and balance our staffing to be more in line with our enrollment. And we had to make, we had to do it at some point, and this was really the time that we cut near, how much was the cuts last year, school year, 20 million?
Approximately 19, 20 million the previous year, approximately 19.
19 this last year or this, or this next year, yeah.
And we're projecting 13 and a half for the next year.
And those are some really hard decisions, but at some point we had to make really hard decisions that the board really had a hard time with too. And, but when you're cutting that type of money because your enrollment has declined and you've been trying to keep the, the numbers the same because we had that ESR money to fall back on, it's just really an unfortunate situation that we had to make some of those decisions.
All right, anything else? All right, next on our agenda is, oh, we're going to, this is a first reading. We will bring it back to the, of the next board meeting for adoption.
Do we need a motion for that? I don't think we do.
I don't think we do either, but.
I don't think we do.
Okay. Yeah. All right, next is informational item. It's our financial statements for June of 2023. It's just information for the board. Next on the agenda is board comments. This is a time for the board members to have, make any comments about what's been happening in the last, since summer. We've been, it's July, so I think most people were out and about. I think we had one meeting in July.
Yeah.
Yep, did.
I think Director Gronwald has something special to report on.
I do. So I was at, about a week and a half ago, I attended the Vancouver Business Journal's Top Projects Ceremony out at the Vancouver Innovation Center. So as on my day job, that's kind of what I do, a lot of commercials, buildings and stuff. So anyways, I was out there and I had the privilege of accepting two awards for Evergreen for our transportation department and image elementary. So I brought them to present them to the district.
And Nicole Baltoso, our director of facilities, executive director of facilities, is here to accept those awards, so.
This one is for the transportation center and this one is for elementary. And I actually was, oh, no. So LSW was there to cut this one with. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you.
Congratulations. Yeah.
You, uh, around so we can see it.
Okay. We'll want you to find our communications team maybe tomorrow and take some pictures so we can post the good news.
There is a picture on the VBJ's Facebook page of all of the recipients. There is only one picture, I believe it was just the, the school with LSW. I don't think they were able to get the other one. For some reason, it messed up. But there is one of me and Karen from LSW.
Thanks, Jenny. That's exciting. Thanks for representing us there.
It's, yeah, I was fortunate to be there when it happened. So my work job, we actually sponsor that, so we had a bunch of people there. So it was awesome.
Jackie, do you have anything? Rob?
Nothing today.
Victoria?
Just that I've been, whoops, sorry. Just that I've been down for the count this summer, but I've been busy following, sending John things to look at, grants, different things. You know, it's a danger of letting me be kind of quiet and watching a lot of news shows. So, but I'm excited to see what the coming year is gonna, we have a lot of challenges, but we also have a lot of opportunities that I feel really positive about.
Thank you.
All right, just a couple of quick things for me. I spent this last weekend with the Washington State School Directors Association for a board meeting. And one of the things I wanted to bring up to this board from that was the Legislative Assembly is in September and I don't, Victoria, are you going to represent us as our voting delegate? Okay. Because it's a hybrid and in-person event. And so I, I'm going to be attending in, not in person, but via Zoom because the board's not having a meeting there, so we're just going to be in the hybrid option. The hybrid option is available too for the voting delegate. Are you going to say something?
Yeah, I'll actually be there in person in a role with WASDA.
For the parliamentary?
The Parliamentary Advisory Committee that I'm on. And they're sending me there at WASDA's expense.
I had a feeling that was happening because Tim mentioned something about that.
Yeah. So there won't be any district costs for that trip.
Excellent.
And I'd probably do it hybrid just because it saves the money for me going there.
What the role means is that I won't be able to take the credential.
Sure, so Victoria will be the one that has the credential, but the rest of us are able to join electronically.
I think they have a better way this year of passing the credential than they did last time.
Well, I'm just, they have a better way too of people to be able to speak and even if you're hybrid or in person. So.
Saying if there's a, if there's a need, that everyone but me can step in if it needs to step away, because it's a two-day meeting.
And won't you be busy doing your three-duty?
They've just, yeah, the parliamentary, the parliamentarian committee role means there's a perceived conflict of interest with.
Yeah, so I would say if Victoria needs to step away, she could pass the credentials to Jenny or Jackie or myself.
Yeah.
We can be available and work that out. Because there's going to be some important topics that are going to be coming up that we need to make sure that we have a voice. The other thing I wanted to, on the 15th, we're going to do interviews for deputy superintendent, correct? And we're looking for.
Yes, thank you for reminding me. On the 10th, we'll do screening for deputy superintendent and we'll do the interviews on the 15th, so we have a plan for that.
We're looking for two more of us to help with that.
We have opportunities for two or three to participate.
So if anybody's interested, maybe just let John or Lori know later. All right. Governor, did you have anything you wanted to add? Okay. All right, next is future agenda items. Is there anything that we'd like to add this evening? All right, this time we'll take public comment. At this time, anyone that is wishing to address the board may do so during the designated time on the agenda for public comments, as long as the comments are not personnel-related or about an individual employee or student and not legal in nature. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to address the board, make sure that you're paying attention to the monitor because your time will be on there. Comments are to be directed to the board of directors as a whole and may not be addressed to any individual member of the board, the administrative staff, or the audience. Please state your name and district affiliation if any. First on the list is Chuck Kepler. Good evening, Chuck. How are you?
Hi, good. Good to see you guys. Hi. My name's Chuck Kepler. I've been a parent to Evergreen Public School kids, if you can believe it, for the last 18 years. Two years to go, a couple more graduations. Back in March, we all sat in this room, absolutely packed, listening to speaker after speaker. And again, on March 28th, same thing, packed room, listening to so many people advocate for the positions that you've chose to cut. At that meeting on the 28th, most of the board agreed that they would like to look at the details of the budget cuts, with one board member admitting that they had not had time to fully review the cuts yet. And I asked many of you this question after that meeting. Is there not one additional admin position that could be cut? The deputy superintendent position that's posted right now has a salary of a quarter of a million dollars. One admin equals 10 paraeducators, six at-risk advocates, or countless other positions that serve students directly on a daily basis. Now, here we are, months later, the budget proposal that has not changed, not one additional admin position eliminated, when the superintendent's own graph in that presentation back in March shows a steady employment number since 2016 at the district office while the district has been shrinking. The excuse of ESR funds does not cover up the fact that enrollment is going down. Evergreen High School lost one of its few black staff members, leader of the Black Student Union there, a person who cares deeply for that community. No job for him in Evergreen High School. Mountain View, Mountain View High School lost an athletic director and a coach who'd been there for 14 years, was 63 and 19 in league play as a coach, won seven league championships, 11 postseason births, and had Mountain View in the top five three different times. He's gone. Union has a similar story. Their coach of seven years was 47 and 22, won two league titles and a state championship. He's now an athletic director up north. So many people, so many people are moving on to better school districts for better jobs because they know they're not cared for in this district. I want to finish with, with this, and that's the fact that, that you have chose to publicly post a part of a contract, and I mean a part of a contract that you're currently negotiating, is not only poor leadership, but it's on the line of being negotiating in bad faith. If you want to post salary numbers, great. Post the rest of the proposal as well. I would love to hear about the impact that the current cuts will have on the classroom environment and the teachers' ability to do their jobs.
Thank you, Chuck. All right, next up is Michelle Annett. Hi again.
Hi. Good evening. My name's Michelle Annett. I was the teacher librarian at Cascade Middle School. I'm here tonight to urge the school board to rethink the budget proposal for the 23-24 school year. When these cuts were announced last March, the cuts to the secondary teacher librarians were called a program reduction. This is not a program reduction. This is total elimination. And we all know that if the secondary teacher librarians are eliminated, these positions will never come back. Now could not be a worse time to eliminate these positions. Our most vulnerable students need teacher librarians who can advocate for their place in the world, who can help them to see themselves in the books in their classrooms, who can create a safe place where these students feel they belong and are seen. Across the country, radical groups are trying to limit the free speech and the freedom to read of all students. Now is not the time to eliminate the teachers at the forefront of these battles. Teacher librarians are the most knowledgeable and most prepared to help our community protect the rights of all students to see themselves in the books they read. Back in May, we heard from the former teacher of the year who is leaving because she is burnt out and doesn't feel supported. By removing teacher librarians, you are taking away another very important and essential layer of support for classroom teachers. Often, I am the only person a classroom teacher can reach via phone. I prevent total nervous breakdowns around technology. I am a trusted instructional coach on technology and media literacy. I am a pedagogical coach as teachers implement new curriculum. I co-teach databases and research with multiple curricular area teachers. I provide professional development on implementation and management of one-to-one devices. I am a jack-of-all-trades, taking pressure off of my administration when they are overwhelmed. I have established and nurtured some of the most important relationships in the school with both staff and students. None of these roles can be filled by a media assistant. As a 26-year veteran teacher of Evergreen Public Schools, I am exhausted and disappointed with district leadership, rolling out the myriad of changes for the next year without actually listening to the feedback of the community. I'm urging the school board members to be the voice of reason and roll back these cuts. There are ways to enact a program reduction that maintains some teacher There are ways to enact a program reduction that maintains some teacher librarians while reducing the total number of certificated positions. Research shows the importance of a certificated teacher librarian in student learning and engagement, and our community is strongly opposed to these cuts. Students and staff access to teacher librarians is too vital to lose.
Thank you. All right. Krista Hagan.
Hello again. I'm Krista Hagan. My husband and I have three children in the district, one at Cascade, two at Endeavor. I'm the daughter of retired teachers, and I spent eight years teaching middle school math before leaving the profession to raise, focus on raising my kids. I've spent an increasingly more time volunteering in my kids' schools because I believe in the powerful role of community member and parent engagement in our public schools. I appreciate your job, that your job is very difficult, the decisions that you all have to make are very complex, and that even the best changes will be received by many with skepticism and resentment, simply because people don't like change over which they have no decision-making power or influence. School board members, Superintendent Boyd, I would like to recommend that the leadership of our district improve communication and collaboration with the parents and community members of your district, beginning by rebuilding trust and good faith between yourselves and the community that you serve. While we all, um, excuse me, there is much that is broken in public education throughout our nation and locally. We all want to do what is best for our students and community, but effective, long-lasting change cannot happen if district leaders and parents are at odds with one another. While it will be a slow and sometimes tedious process, I recommend that this governing body of the school slow down, slow down in making these radical changes to our processes and routines and people. If you want them to be successful, put these big, 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 big changes on the backburner until you rebuild your relationship with the parents and other stakeholders in your community. Some practical ideas toward this goal. Please change the way you speak in your videos, the sit-down-with-the-suit videos. Remember that a majority of parents will not understand education ease and will not speak or hear at that collegiate level. Your videos are useless if viewers don't understand the words you're using. Another suggestion is that you go to your community members, speaking and listening to them on their own turf. I was born with the gift of gumption and have many years in the education world, so this environment doesn't intimidate me as much. For many parents, however, this is an unknown and intimidating territory. Many would not even begin to know how to express their concerns or ask their questions, not to mention that this room is only so big and many people are unable to take time away from other commitments to attend these meetings. Or they may feel that they can attend and they can speak, but nothing will change. If you really want to build a collaborative spirit of trust, you will need to meet the people on their terms and in their own comfort zones. Finally, I recommend that the board learn from the recommendations of author Jamie Volmer, especially those outlined in his book, Schools Can't Do It Alone. What I've observed and experienced personally and learned more about from this book is that other school district, our school district leaders can make the best decisions on behalf of the students, but the results will be doomed to failure if the district and its stakeholders are not working together. It's on you to bring this conversation to the community, to make the time to listen and to give space for the input and influence of teachers, parents, staff, students, and business members in the community. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Krista. All right. And the last person signed up this evening is Jenny Vertisca. Jenny, are you here? Oh, there you are, Jenny. Hi there.
Hello. School board and superintendent, my name is Jenny Vertisca, and I have two students in the district. I've spoken here several times regarding the budget cuts and expressed my frustrations about requesting to be part of the public involvement process. Mr. Boyd reached out to me and we met earlier today. I learned that there was a workshop held on May 24th and that he thought I had been invited. I would like to thank him and the school board for holding that workshop. I'm disappointed that there seems to have been a technological glitch and I didn't receive my invitation, but I am glad other community members had the opportunity to be heard. I am still unhappy with the cuts. I appreciate Mr. Boyd taking the time to reach out to me and answering my questions and listening to my concerns. I encourage you to please follow his lead, be more responsive to public comments made at these meetings, and I hope that we are able to have a successful school year even with these cuts, and we can continue to work towards providing a quality education to all of our students and involve the public more. I also would like to request to be a part of that Excel funding communication. I would like to know more about that, that you're going to be sending to her. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And so with that, at this time, we will be reconvening in an executive session where we will discuss the performance of a public employee. That will last approximately 45 minutes. Thank you. All right. The time is now 7:25 and the board is coming out of an executive session. We will now render a decision. I will entertain a motion.
I move that the board accept the recommendation of the superintendent to terminate the employment of... Sorry, what was her first?
Angela Spokus.
Angela Spokus for the reasons provided by Mrs. Gomes, and that Mrs. Gomes provide appropriate written notice to Mrs. Spokus of the board's action.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Excellent. Thank you. All right. At this time, we will now adjourn our meeting. Thank you.